Seventeen, in the New Jersey Star-Ledger, the official newspaper for the township of Springfield for the year two thousand seventeen, and posted in the Annex Building on December twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, we have a roll call.
Mr. Luigi Monaco?
Here.
Mr. Stephen Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. David Schnur?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Daniel Poltrock is absent. Ms. Jody Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Harris Lauffer is absent. Vice Chair Greg Roth?
Here.
Chairman Anthony Von Sekka?
Here.
Sir, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion to approve the minutes for the September two thousand eighteen meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any abstentions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have one resolution, approval of an amended resolution. It was application twenty eighteen dash nine, The Lutheran Senior Healthcare Inc., six thirty-nine Mountain Avenue, block twenty-nine oh one, lot seventy-five. That was for a preliminary and final site plan, use variance with a bulk variance, senior living center. Is there a motion to approve the amended resolution?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Seven.
We have a roll call, please.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Monaco?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur?
No.
Mr. Cunningham? Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Chairman Von Sekka?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we have three applications tonight. The first one is application twenty eighteen dash sixteen, Colette Denise Barron, One Prospect Place, block two oh one, lot one, for three bulk variances for an addition. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'll be swearing you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the boards, the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spelling your last name.
Colette Denise Barron, B-A-R-O-N.
And could you give your address, please?
One Prospect Place, Springfield, New Jersey.
Okay. And for everyone in the audience, if you could just, when you come up here, just make sure you speak in the microphone, not only so we can all hear you, but also for our record. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Tell us what you want to do.
Since I bought the house many years ago, I got married recently, and we're going to expand our family. We're going to adopt some babies. So I want to add some additions to my house, expand my kitchen, add another bedroom to the third floor, and since I work out of my home, where my office is, I want to move it to, on top of the garage, so I can expand my kitchen, because it's back-to-back on the kitchen.
It looks like all you really want to do is just go straight up? There aren't any bump outs, or any, anything that's outside of the original footprint?
Yes.
Okay. The materials, everything is going to be redone on the exterior of the home, so it'll all be, like, one?
Uniform.
One color, one uniform?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
I do. It says new office, and I see there's like a separate stairway up there. Is this an office just for your own use, or are you going to have public?
No. It's just for my own use. When I'm not traveling for work, I work out of my house.
So it's a home office?
It's a home office, yes.
Not an office that you're seeing clients?
Oh, no, not at all.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do our professionals have any questions? Where's Sam?
Over there.
Oh. You're usually over there. I got me all confused. Do you have any questions regarding this application?
No, I, I have, I have not, you know, I reviewed the application, and there were really no issues. They're basing to the second.
Going straight up.
They happen to be at a corner lot, so they need two front yard variances, and the house itself is large, so they are in violation of certain criteria, but they're not, they're not increasing, but that's locked up.
Yeah, it's already non-conforming.
Right, exactly. So they're only asking for three variances, and that's two front yard variances, not in the rear yard.
All right. We don't have any issues with any water issues, anything like that?
No, there's no impact. There's no impact.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this matter? Okay, I think we can go ahead. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward.
Please state your name for the record, sir, spelling your last name.
Michael McBride, M-C, capital B-R-I-D-E.
And could you give your address?
Yes, Three Prospect Place in Springfield.
Okay, and I'm going to swear you in as well. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the boards, the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for raising my hand late.
That's okay.
I live next door to Ms. Barron and Felix, and Three Prospect with my wife Janet, and we're in favor of a resolution to increase their home and increase their family, and we don't see any issues where it would bother us as neighbors, and that's all the testimony I wanted to get.
Great. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's architect is here, if you have any questions for the architect.
I think we're okay. All right, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve application twenty eighteen dash sixteen, Colette Denise Barron, One Prospect Place, block two oh one, lot one, for three bulk variances for her addition. Is there a second? Maybe we have a roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Monaco?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur?
Ms. Cohen? Yes.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Chairman Von Sekka?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good luck to you.
When are you planning to start this project?
I haven't done my paperwork yet.
So it's not like you?
In the next six months.
Okay, good. All right. That's fine. Oops.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. So the next application we're going to hear is application twenty eighteen dash fifteen, JMK Group LLC, three ninety-one, Route twenty-two East, block thirty-nine oh three, lot fourteen, for a preliminary and final site plan, use variance for a body shop. Please come forward.
John Ferraro appearing on behalf of the applicant. The application in question tonight, it's for a D-one use variance. My client, the proposed site, they're looking to operate a, sorry, an auto body repair shop. Sorry about that. So the site currently proposed is being used for auto body prep. It's a car wash, and they're doing reconditioning of vehicles, they're detailing vehicles. What my client wishes to do for the proposed use, he wants to take that use, and also he wants to perform auto body repair at the site, thus they're requesting a D-one use variance. The site is currently zoned I forty general industrial, therefore the necessity for the use variance. My client, he currently owns and operates Quality Auto Center. It's directly located adjacent to the north on Route twenty-two. What he's going to be doing is, his cars at that auto, at that car dealership, he's going to be using the site to prep the vehicles there to be sold onsite at the dealership on Route twenty-two. So in addition to prepping and detailing the cars, he's also asking that he could use that site for the auto body repair. We'll have two witnesses, Mark Abad, he'll be testifying on behalf of the applicant, and we'll also have Michael Lanza Fama, the certified planner and engineer, to testify as to the impact in the site plan. For the first witness, we'd like to call Mark Abad.
Good evening. I'll swear you in, sir. If you could, go ahead. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the boards, the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Please give your name for the record, spelling your last name.
How are you? My name is Mark Abad, A as in apple, B as in boy, A as in apple, I as in Indiana, D as in David. I am the owner of Quality Auto Center on three forty-five Route twenty-two in Springfield. We are, like my attorney discussed, we are trying to propose to use the back building, which is currently used for PDI detailing, you know, prepping and servicing of vehicles. We would like to add auto body to it. Both properties are connected, Ten Cornell Auto Body is in pretty much an industrial cul-de-sac with adjacent, another body shop right across from. Mr. Abad, so for the proposed site, you'll be using that site to recondition the vehicle, to detail the vehicles, and do some minor auto body repair? That is correct, yes. Will the customers, will you be serving customers directly at that site? Will the customers be served at the Quality Auto Center set on Route twenty-two? All customers and public people are through Quality Auto Center on Route twenty-two. The vehicles that are going to be restored and repaired at the site, will they be stored within the building structure itself? Inside, yes. Will you ever have to store vehicles outside the building, or will they be stored at the Quality Auto Center lot itself? Vehicle that need repairs will mostly be inside the building, and it's not going to be that much. It may be once in a while, once in a blue moon, where we have to leave a car overnight in the property, which is probably going to be in the Quality Auto property, but nine out of ten, it's going to be within the building. And from the location on Route twenty-two for Quality Auto Center, are you able to access the site through the rear entrance? Yes, you are, and you have an exit and entrance also from Ten Cornell, so you can go from either entrance or exit. I'm onsite, I know that you're requesting to install a paint booth, is that correct? Yes. Do you describe the operation of the paint booth? So, pretty much a paint booth is basically an airtight enclosed room where we paint, you know, body panels. It's, like I said, it's airtight, filter all around, so all filtration go inside the spray booth, nothing goes out, there's no fumes, no anything. So if a vehicle gets sprayed inside, gets dried, everything is sucked out, once it's done and dry, and then the vehicle just comes out. If it comes to you, how large is the spray booth? It's about four hundred square feet, so it's about the size of a car, and, you know, walking distance around it. Okay, and will there be a separate room onsite where the paint will be stored? Yes, you got to have a separate paint room. And that paint will be mixed in the paint room as well? Correct, yes. Okay, as to maintenance of the lot, is it your intention to make the necessary repairs to the pavement on the lot itself? One hundred percent, yes. And the landscaping, is it your intent to maintain the landscaping in a suitable manner? One hundred percent. Just for the volume of auto body repair, is that going to be, just your best estimate, are you going to be doing large scale of high volume auto body repair on the site? Not really. It's mostly, you know, just refinishing bumpers, you know, scratches, little dents here and there, so it's nothing really major. And again, it's all of our cars that we're doing there, which, you know, we're just going to clean them up, detail them, PDI them, get them cleaned up, and then they just drive up to the front building and get retailed. No further questions, does the board have questions?
So this is not a body shop for the public, this is really just for you to take care of the cars that you're dealing with?
It's for the cars that we deal with, but we also, we have to handle our clients that buy these vehicles from us. God forbid anything happens, they have to bring it back to the dealership, and we do the repairs. But the customer coming off the street, I mean, that's, that's almost nonexistent.
Okay.
I'm a little confused by that. So people coming off the street who want auto body repair, that's not the people that will be working, that you'll be working for? It's only people who are past customers, and it's the cars that you sold, or the cars that you have for sale?
Yes, I mean, obviously, if a customer walks in, you know, again, when I say customer walk in, they're walking into the Quality Auto Center on twenty-two. There's going to be no customers in the back. You know, if they walk in and they say, hey, listen, I, you know, I was referred by a friend or something, can you give me an estimate? We legally can't say no, and, you know, not do that, but, you know, we're not going to be advertising this, you know, and say, hey, listen, we're an auto body shop, we need customers, you know, we don't, we don't do that. Celebrity Collision Center, which is right across from me in Ten Cornell, they, they do that, they do a lot of high volume, you know, collision centers, heavy collisions. We're not really, we're not really looking to do that, just to service our cars, that's the main, really the main operation.
You don't open an operation not to make money?
Of course not.
So obviously, you know, you want this to make money for you. If in the event you become wildly successful repairing cars, is this property going to be taxed by a volume of vehicles?
If it is open to the general public, yes, but if it is not, then it should not be an issue.
Okay, so how do we kind of put a lid on that?
You can put a condition to the resolution.
Okay, that's fine. What I didn't, you know, just what's, the other question was just asked is, you're selling used cars?
New and used.
New and used, okay. If something happened to a car I bought from you, why would I have to bring it back to you?
Because it's, it's usually, I don't want to say tradition, but orthodox, you know, anything that has to do with a vehicle, first thing they do is come back to the dealership.
Is your body shop going to be certified?
By?
I understand that today, to fix certain cars, you have to be certified.
Correct.
So that if you lease a car, and there's damage to the car, if it's not fixed to a certain standard, there could be a problem when the car gets turned in.
Correct. You have to be ASE certified, your technicians, first of all, you have to be certified by the state, so it's not just something that's...
I'm talking about the manufacturers.
The manufacturer, yes, as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can't just fix, you know, an off lease, let's just say BMW, I can't do that. You have to be unauthorized, they have to do their tests and everything, for that to happen.
Okay. That may prohibit you from doing certain work.
Certain work, yes, yeah.
Okay, all right. Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Bob?
Are you proposing any signs for this building?
We're just going to put one sign with our name of the body shop on there, you know, nothing, nothing crazy.
Do we know what that sign is going to look like?
I, I didn't even get that far, you know, just something that, just had to...
As long as it meets the ordinance standards, then...
That's fine.
My reason why I question was then, I mean, so you're not looking for, to get people off the street to come there, so they'd have to go back on the cul-de-sac of Cornell Parkway to see the sign?
Correct.
Know that you were there.
Yeah. It's not going to be something advertised, you know, where we advertise it on, I don't know, an auto body website and say, hey, listen, come to this address. No. All the customers and clients are going to be, you know, our customers, they're met in the Quality Auto on twenty-two.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, but they have to come for a sign permit, and then, and then that's analyzed to determine whether or not it meets.
Right.
And if it does, then it can be issued.
That's fine. Are there any, any other questions from the professionals?
Now, the engineer is going to speak?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, go ahead.
Can you just, I'm sorry, can you just explain to me again, the painting and mixing?
Okay.
It's not vented, where does it go?
So, in, in the spray booth, when you paint the vehicle, it's all enclosed, so it's a big, it's basically a big airtight filter, and it's all filtered around. So anything that comes out gets filtered back into the system and through the filters.
Okay.
Okay. The paint room, you know, you have a staff, you have to have a special paint room where you do your mixing, which has to be far away from everything else, and it's all enclosed, it's a whole system that gets into place, it's not even us. So it just gets in there, it's all mixed internally, and everything gets done.
Yeah, and, and all the paints are kept in a specific type of container?
Correct, yeah.
And so forth, and all the rigs are in self-sealing cans, so that you don't have any spontaneous combustion or anything like that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Before we hear the next witness, is there anybody from the public that would have any questions of this witness? Okay.
Thank you.
Do you swear in the testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the boards, the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Could you give your name and spell your last name and give your business affiliation?
Sure.
Thank you.
It's Michael Lanza Fama, that's L-A-N-Z-A-F-A-M-A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with the firm of Casey and Keller Incorporated, two fifty-eight Main Street, Millburn, New Jersey. I've testified before this and other boards throughout the state on numerous occasions.
Is your license in good standing as of today?
It is, sir.
Okay, you can accept your credentials.
Thank you. I have prepared an aerial exhibit, which I believe might help the board in understanding the unique nature of this site, and how, in my opinion, it's particularly suited to the use that we are proposing.
We'll mark that as A-one, if you could just give us a date for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
The date that the photograph is dated, June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. And what the exhibit shows is the property in question, which is Ten Cornell Parkway, is outlined in yellow. It is tax lot fourteen and block thirty-nine oh three, and as the attorney pointed out, is located in the I-four General Industrial District. It's a one point two five acre site that is located at the terminus of Cornell Parkway. You see the cul-de-sac in the center portion of the exhibit. To the north of the property is the Quality Auto Center, and this is the, that relationship, the link between the two exists as a driveway connection along the rear of the properties. As you can see from the exhibit, the property is surrounded by a multitude of commercial uses, and especially along the Route twenty-two corridor, which is on the upper left portion of the exhibit. This is the Route twenty-two eastbound. You can see the BMW of Springfield, you have the Quality Auto Center, and Twenty-First Century Auto. And then to the south, you can see that the Celebrity Collision Center, as well as office buildings, completely surrounding the site, so it is really blocked and wholly located away from any residential property, or any properties that could be potentially impacted by this particular use. And as Mark, the owner of the property, pointed out, there's only a small portion of the building, about, the size of the booth is actually four hundred and fifty-nine square feet, so it's a very small area that is allocated to the spray painting, and then there's another small area for the storage of the paint, and then exactly where the body work would be done is immediately adjacent. As he pointed out, the work is primarily done on cars that they have purchased or taken in to their facility for sale, so they touch them up, fix up any type of flaws that might exist on those cars, so that they could then sell them for top value at the Quality Auto Center running on Route twenty-two. He, Mark also mentioned that occasionally, if a person's leasing a car from them and has an accident, that he would be able then to provide them with the service of repairing them, but they're not obligated to necessarily come to him, but he wanted to have that capability. If you refer to sheet number three and the set of plans that were submitted, you can see the location of the... as well as a breakdown of the space and how it's being utilized. The overall building is twenty-two thousand and six square feet in size. The overall site has a coverage well in excess of the seventy-two percent that's permitted by the ordinance, or about eighty-seven percent. So one of the benefits of this application is the fact that what we are doing is we're proposing to install a drywall system that will collect runoff from the roof area, that would basically mitigate the excess impervious coverage that we had on the site from the ordinance that existed when the building was constructed. So this drywall system, which is going to be located on the north side of the building, will take what's considered by the, by the DDP is clean runoff, take it and recharge it into the ground, so you're getting the significant benefit of reducing runoff rates from the site from their current situation. As you can see on the exhibit, there's an area broken down, there's an automated car wash in the northwest corner of the building, there are two garage doors at grade that allow for access into the building, which would be the automated car wash, as well as the prep station and car detailing area. As we move around the building to the back, there's also a drive-in door on the east side of the building, in the northeast corner, that allows for access, again, into the prep station and car detailing area. There are two loading docks also located on the east side of the building, and they provide access into the vehicle storage area as well. And you can see where we have the, we have a little rectangular area, you say body man, well, this is where the body work would occur, the spray booth and the paint mixing area are all located on that central portion of the site. The building, based upon the uses, requires forty parking spaces, existing is twenty-nine, so it's an existing non-conforming use that exists at the site. We don't see that as a problem, because as Mark pointed out, this is only going to be utilized by the employees of Quality Auto Center, so there's only going to be a handful of employees in the building at any given time, so the twenty-nine parking spaces would be more than adequate for our needs. As far as the actual use variance goes, as I've stated in my opening, I think the property is particularly suited for this particular use because of its location within the community, its central location in the I-fourty zone, surrounded by commercial uses, basically shielded from view from adjoining properties. The site is immediately adjacent to the Quality Auto Sales Center. It is an area where it's prevalent that new and used car sales exist along Route twenty-two corridor, and for years, it's been used as a prep center by BMW, which is the dealership on Route twenty-two. So when you say that a site is particularly suited for this use, it promotes the general welfare, because under the municipal land use law, there are certain purposes that provide us with what's referred to as the positive criteria. And in my opinion, this proposal advances item G, which talks about to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of commercial and industrial uses. So in my opinion, I believe that this is an excellent location, it's close proximity to the primary user, it's almost like an accessory use to this primary use. Item H talks about the encouragement of the free flow of traffic. The fact that it's adjacent to the sales center reduces the potential for a significant amount of traffic along the other streets, along the rest of Cornell Parkway, along Route twenty-two. The fact that it's immediately adjacent, for example, there's detailing and auto body works having to be located in a community where such a use is permitted, or another location within this community, they would have to travel a significant distance to and from the Quality Sales Center, and thereby increasing the traffic flow on the already busy Route twenty-two. And J, excuse me, J promotes the conservation of energy resources, again, minimizing vehicular trips to remote locations, in my opinion, advances some of those goals. As far as the negative criteria goes, I believe that you're not going to have any significant impact on the public good or the intent and purpose of your zone plan, you're reaping the benefit of improved stormwater management, you're reaping the benefit of reducing potential trip traffic, vehicular traffic, and you're basically continuing the use that had been in that facility for a protracted period of time, you're only adding a small element, which is body shop, and you're assisting Quality Auto in being successful along, along the Route twenty-two corridor. The master plan and zoning ordinance often talks about avoid conflicting land uses and land uses which generate commercial traffic through residential areas. We would offer that this application achieves. We would offer that this application achieves. That concludes my testimony and provides for what I believe are the necessary proofs to allow the D1 variance for this use to proceed. I think we've addressed the positive and the negative criteria, and the special reasons as to why this use should be permitted.
How many people will be working at the body shop?
If you won't mind coming up to my Thank you.
Probably about maybe five or six employees. Nothing major.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
I have a question. You have proposed parking spaces. Is that just delineating the spaces that's already paved?
Yes, they're already paved. We plan on resurfacing the lot, so we're going to have to restripe it. One of the things mentioned in Mr. Michael's report is that should be hairpin striping. We'll certainly adjust the plan and provide for that.
So there's no increase in impervious coverage?
There's no increase in impervious coverage.
Any other questions? Officials have any questions?
I'm sorry. How many total employees are going to be? You said the body shop, but are there any other office area personnel, or what's the total number of people?
No, it's just used right now for detailing, just like it was. So, you know, with the detailing, maybe seven, eight, max?
Eight, including, so max employees on site at one time.
Yeah.
If, if that much.
Would employees from the car dealership be parking at the body shop facility?
No.
Okay.
Question for you. How will the order run if the automated car washing machine be managed?
The, the automated car wash is already in there. There's a system where it's filtered and reused, or what is repurposed.
You know, my, my concern is public use of the, of the body shop. So I think if we were to approve this, we'd have to limit it to what the actual use is that you've come to us for, and not for the public to be able to come in and have their cars repaired. How would you feel about that?
Like I said, that's fine. Public, you know, again, it could be our customers that come back. Like I said, if we get somebody that walks into the Quality Auto Sales Center building and says, listen, I was referred to you guys here, you know, again, we legally can't say no, you know, but it's not something that we're going to go out and advertise for, and it's not going to be our sole means of business. You know, that's just ancillary use.
How, how many parking spots are they supposed to have?
Forty.
Forty. And there's 29 spots. See, so my concern is that if the public did start to come to your body shop, we might not have the capacity to handle the traffic, the vehicles, and so forth, and then all of a sudden it becomes an overcongested area. So that's, that's a concern.
If I may, I think it's important to note that we're not going to be advertising this as an auto body repair shop open to the public.
I understand.
The only customers that we're going to be, whose cars we're going to be fixing potentially would be customers at the auto center. So this isn't going to be a storefront where there's advertising and signage for the body
I understand, and I'm telling you how I feel about this and how the board feels.
Just to that point, is that if we approve it, then if you want to business, the next guy has a car, does a car wash.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we want to try to keep a lid on what's going on.
Yeah. Just, just to add, you know, even like that one person that comes in that's referred to us, there's no customers back there. So the customer will still be parking up in the front, you know, where they walk in.
Okay. This is the third time I'm going to say this. If we're going to approve this, I think we need to stipulate that you're not open to the general public.
That, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right.
I just have one.
Please.
On the site plan, you, maybe from Michael, whoever can answer the question, there's an area outside that identified proposed storage parking area. Is that intended, what cars are going to be stored there? Are the cars that need, are needing repair, cars that have been repaired? And how long are they out there? Do you know?
We, we had indicated that on the plan, it was on a prior site plan that had, that we had received from JMK. I don't believe it's the intention to store them for more than a few hours as we're cycling them in and out of the building. So it could be, you know, as you're detailing, you run out of room inside or waiting to be car washed, that's where we're going to store them until we cycle them through the process. They're not going to be stored there overnight.
My concern is if it's open to the public, and, you know, we're not taking door things out, you know, a car gets broadsided, and it's a $27,000 repair, that's not going to be done in two or three days. That's, you know, you're talking several weeks for something like that. So all of a sudden, you know, if you had jobs like this, now we have cars sitting around, and to me, that's, that would be a concern. That's why I'm against open to the public.
Yeah. Again, there would be no public in the back at all.
I think that condition, if the board was to impose that condition, that would resolve that problem. I know.
Please. The engineer. The plan calls out for 29 existing and proposed. I note, I see that the existing condition parking is a different configuration than what's being shown. Are you, and you moved your drive aisle circulation over, over to the east. Where is the 29 parking spaces? Is that, I see you have nine identified to the north and several parallel parking spaces identified.
So we had, we had nine in the northeast corner. There are four parallel spots and a handicap spot as a fifth spot further to the, towards the east. So that's six, that's 15. And then we had the ability to park along the rear. You're not delineated, but we can certainly delineate them later on when we, after we resurface the parking, we can, we can resurface the lot, we can provide parking for those.
But is your testimony that you're able to provide the proposed storage parking area as well as 29 parking spaces?
Well, at least one of the roads we can provide. These are pretty wide, the storage area is here, so we can easily get the 29 cars on site.
All right. Well, I would recommend a revised plan be submitted, showing the 29 spaces.
Sure. Not a problem.
Any other questions? Is, is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard about on this application? I'm going to ask for an approval for the application, subject to a parking site plan being made available, so that we have the 29 spots and so forth. Obviously, any signage has to be approved, so before anything like that can be done. Most importantly, that this is going to be stipulated, that this is not open to the public. This is predominantly for cars that you may be purchasing to clean up somewhat, so that you can put them on your showroom floor, or on your, on your lot, and, you know, the prepping of cars, et cetera. So have I missed anything? Have we thought everything?
Yeah, everything I had.
Okay. So, subject to those stipulations, I would ask for a motion to approve application 2018-15, JMK Group LLC, 391 Route 22 East, Block 3903, Lot 14. Preliminary and final site plan, use variance for a body shop. Is there a motion to approve the application?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
May we have a rule call?
Mr. Monaco?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
How soon is it that you want to start this project?
As soon as possible as we can.
Well, yeah, right, it doesn't really matter. You have to get, meet some conditions first. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. It's application 2018-12, Panera Bread LLC, 295 Route 22 East, Block 4001, Lot 3. A preliminary and final site plan, use variance with bulk variances for an added drive-through.
Good evening.
Before you start, counsel, just for the record, there were two individuals that were not here at the last meeting. So they read the transcript, signed off on the certification by absent member form, and had it notarized. So I have them here if you'd like to see them. If not, I'll keep them for the record.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Conchatori, with the law firm of Price, Me, Schulman, and D'Arminio, representing the applicant, Panera LLC. As the chairman indicated, this is a continuation of an application where Panera is requesting incorporation of a drive-through at their existing bakery café location. At the last hearing, we did proffer our, all of our witnesses, including a Panera rep, civil engineering testimony, a traffic engineer, as well as planning testimony. During the hearing, there were a couple of, of what I'll call loose ends, factual things that the board had requested confirmation on. In addition, Panera wanted the opportunity to take another look at its plan, based on some of the comments from the board, to see if we could incorporate some additional items, whether it be by signage or otherwise, to improve the operation of the drive-through, again, to address some of the concerns and, and comments from the board members. We have done that and completed that process. Although I have all of my witnesses in attendance again this evening, what I think makes sense is I can call Dave Wasatsky, who is the project civil engineer, who can summarize all of the items and additional coordination that was done in this intervening month, and then we can proceed from that point. So unless there's anything else, I can, I can do that.
Counsel, just for the, for the record, there was a amended site plan that was submitted for?
There was, yes. Thank you, yes. We did submit an amended site plan, which incorporated the changes to the plan that you will hear testify to in a few moments. That plan was reviewed, and an additional supplemental review letter was generated by the board's engineers, which in our mind resolved many, many of the issues. But yes, thank you.
Okay. Why don't we just mark it, if we could, the amended site plan, we'll mark as, I think we're up to A6.
Correct.
And, and then we received a report dated October 10th, 2018, from the board engineer, and we'll mark that, I think that's B1.
Yes, that's fine.
The board did not get that. Jen, the board has indicated they haven't seen that letter yet.
Okay.
Okay, so I have my copy. Could we make copies for the board?
Sure.
Yes. Oh, we sent it an email? It wasn't in the packet? It was
Did you put it in Dropbox?
It's on the drive.
Oh, okay. That's why.
I could make copies.
I would have thought.
Sorry.
My bad.
Would you like us to, to wait to start?
I don't know. I'll shut up to the chairman. Yeah, you?
I think you can start.
You sure? Whatever, whatever works.
I think you can start.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'd call Dave Wasatsky again, who has testified at the last hearing. Dave?
Good evening, board.
At the last hearing, there were some additional items that we had requested additional confirmation and coordination, and did you in fact do that and generate a revised amended site plan?
And, and sir, you remain sworn. Do you understand that?
Yes, I do. And you in fact did generate? Yes, we did. Okay. Perhaps you can summarize for the board, using exhibits as necessary, the changes to the plan from the last hearing.
Okay. So what I, what I've put up on the board here, which I presume we're marking as yet another exhibit?
Okay.
We're at A
Seven?
Okay, A7, yeah.
Seven? Is a representation of Sheet C4, which was submitted in the revised portion of the application of Rev. 1 of the plan. This is an exhibit prepared 10/11/2018 by our office. It represents Sheet C4, but colorized for presentation, and laid on top of the aerial so you could see the existing site beneath it as, as it relates. So essentially, just in summary, taking us back since it was three months ago, I guess when we were
It was last month.
Was it?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It only seems like
It seemed, seemed longer for some, for some reason.
Yes, we, we were here and weren't reached one time, but it was last month.
But in any minute, okay. So since the last time we were here, just a little refresher, we have, our, our drive-through is on the northern, northern side of the building, and this, this plan is the same orientation and representation as the previous site plan that you saw. We have a drive-through that operates in a clockwise direction coming into the building. Some of the concerns that the board had were that we, we do have an aisle in, in the middle of this drive-through that serves for loading purposes, if you recall. There's a counter clockwise loading that goes around the building as trucks load in a counter clockwise way, and they exit this way. And, and as there is an exit that way now, with parking on both sides, that's going to be replaced by the drive-through, but in this unusual configuration, we have a drive-through that needs to get across that loading aisle. And some of the concerns were, are cars going to block the box? Are there going to be conflicts between trucks and cars? So we, we took that advice, and we actually suggested in the last hearing, there, there was some potential solutions to that, which we've now incorporated into the plan. So I'll kind of quickly go through that, and then talk a little bit about the truck circulation, because there was also some questions about how existing trucks are delivered, what type and such. So I'll try to cover both of those. So the, if you notice, in the center of the, the drive-through, there's these two areas that are now blocked off with the white X's. And you, you might see this sometimes in, in urban intersection type situations, where it's a do not blocks situation. They have white, white paint on the ground and signs that denote just the same. So the white paint is at the entrance queue and the exit queue of that, of the drive-through. I'm sorry, not the entrance queue, and the queue in between the menu board and, and the building side, right? So you have those two places, and you have a sign in each location that now indicates don't block the box. So that's one measure. The second measure is, and I think we alluded to this also in the previous hearing, after, after the point of the menu board, for the last car in the queue, waiting, waiting for them to go toward the building side, there's now a, a green and red stoplight. It's, it's a small apparatus that stands roughly about driver's eye, driver's eye tall, with a red light and a green light on it. There's a sign accompanying that says, "Stop here until light turns green." This is a sign, an application type, type thing that we've used in, in drive-throughs before, when we have site distance issues around the building or other type things. It's controlled by a sensor that's mounted to a baller on the building side, around, I'll mark that with an OOVX, so it's easier, or a black X, so it's easier to see, which would monitors a presence or absence of a vehicle in the location of this blue car right here. When, when that, when that area is blocked, this light is red. As soon as this vehicle moves up into the queue, towards, towards the spot where he's going to pick up a shoe, and that location is empty, that, that light then goes to green, notifying the person that they can indeed now, they won't be blocking the box, they indeed have the green right away, and they can cross to the other side. The next person that pulls up, as, as soon as that person pulls up while they're ordering that this yellow car for illustration purposes would get into the queue here, it would then turn that light back to, back to red. So with those two traffic control measures, I, I think we're going to be controlling the traffic in, in, in a more detailed fashion. The only other item added to the plan in this case, on the eastern side of the drive-through, there's a turnaround space. As we noted, there was also this one, the question and concern was that this aisle here, in between our drive-through, is, is a two-way aisle, right? And since we know that, that the circulation around the building is really only counterclockwise, the question was why, you know, why does that still remain two, two-way? In the existing case, it's two-way because there, there's parking all, all on that edge. In this case, it remains that way because we have our, the dumpsters for, for the site are, are right in the eastern corner, in that fat corner, and garbage trucks and garbage trucks will and do go in that direction in addition to the clockwise direction. It also gives us a final fail-safe in the unlikely event that someone travels along in front of the store, takes a right, thinking they're either going to park or get into the drive-through, but then at the last minute decides, "Oh, I don't know if I want to do that," and now they've missed a turn. In that unlikely case, which I think, based on the site distances and the layouts and the signage we have, won't happen much, but if it did, we just wanted to do a belt-suspenders fail-safe that if they do get to this point here, since they can't go counterclockwise around, oh, sorry, clockwise around the building because there's a view on either side, they do have that option that they could turn around and come back if indeed necessary. So with that, those traffic controls, the stop bar we have for trucks leading out of the loading docks, and the site distances we have for each, I think we can accommodate the operation of the facility. So that is the layout, which I'm happy to answer questions, but I'd like to show you one more exhibit beforehand, and then unless you have questions now.
Then we'll do the other.
Yep, sure. So one final exhibit that I have for you, which was talked about in the last meeting, was also requested by your engineer, is a truck turning exhibit, which I assume we're now at?
Sure, Ray. Do we have that here as well?
We do not. This is not submitted as part of the package, and I apologize for that. But this is a truck turning exhibit WB67 dated 10/11/2018, prepared by our office. It shows the truck access for the largest vehicle that would really be on a typical highway and on this site, as it exists today, and what would happen in the future. So to be, and to be clear on, no, let me cover the access first, and then we'll talk about the number of trucks. All right, so trucks traveling eastbound on 22 now take a right, they enter into the site. As we just talked about on tour, they travel in a counterclockwise direction around the site, and today, they come and they continue to that counterclockwise direction. There's no stop, there's no stop bar today at the location at the edge of the building. They continue in that counterclockwise direction through that drive aisle that exists today, which is a 26-foot wide aisle, which I think we established in the last hearing as well. And they travel in between the two aisles of parking that exist here today. And then they travel, even though it doesn't look intuitive if you've ever been to the store and seen the corner, that a WB67 tractor trailer can travel around in front of a building and exit outside. That's what it does today. That's what these trucks have been doing since the center's been built and continues to on a regular basis. What happens now, the only difference is you've replaced those two aisles of parking with a drive-through access. At the drive-through access, the closest point between the drive-throughs, the access aisle is still 24 feet. Where it is 26 today, so there is a spot where there's a two-foot pinch, but that spot only happens at the very end here, right at the edge of the building, on the western side of the building, and at the very beginning of the drive-through, right where I put these X's. That's kind of where the menu board is when they come in. In between those areas, the access aisle width is actually larger than it is today because of the painted stripe aisle that referring back to A7 is along that northern side of the drive-through access. So in most places, the truck actually has more room to turn than it does today. On the two pinch points that I just referenced, we modeled the truck going through those points, and certainly we'll submit it to the engineer for his confirmation and review if you see fit. But the WB67 truck makes it through without any impact to the vehicles that would be either in the queue or on the drive-through side. And as previously discussed, max queue we're going to see for this site, or Panera has seen any of their drive-throughs, is eight. This configuration supplies nine at a minimum, and so there's limited truck conflicts. So with that, the other question was, well, how many trucks are delivering there? And when do they deliver, and is that going to be a conflict based on the peak times that Bobby, the area manager for Panera, testified to last time? So between the last hearing and this hearing, we've talked to the landlord and the tenants that are there now to confirm what kind of trucks they have. As it happens, the Hobby Lobby store, that's the southern anchor here, does use a WB67 truck. The report to us is that they have one truck per week that loads into that store. It typically comes on Friday mornings between the hours of 8:00 and 12:00, or earlier. The five below has two box-sized trucks. In the engineering lingo, we call those SU30s. That's not a tractor-trailer, it's a single-unit body truck, which of course are much smaller than the WB67s. They get two per week that generally load in the mornings. During holiday times, there is sometimes peaks. There might be an extra truck per week on those cases. But that data and listening to that, I think corroborates the operational look of what we're doing and the conflicts, because the peak times for our drive-through are lunchtimes generally during the week, and we expect the trucks to be out of there. So in a general sense, when that WB67 truck comes once a week in the mornings, our queue lengths are going to obviously be even less than the eight that we're talking about, probably significantly less or far less. And even if they weren't, the idea of showing this exhibit is that the truck still gets through. It has site distance. Even if, whether a belt and suspenders, and suspenders on that, if someone does happen to block the box here, the truck sitting in that direction with the stop sign has clear site distance to see that vehicle. With the less than three-minute wait times for the operational turnover of the food, in the worst case, I don't think it's a safe issue, because what would happen? The truck may have to wait a couple minutes in the event that all of these fail safes do not act as they're supposed to. So I think the drive-through is safe and operational, I guess, in a summary.
And last, just in terms of your coordination regarding with the landlord, and then I'll add another point for the record in regards to the owner landlord, but in terms of, there was a question about leases and the knowledge of the tenants. Well, you provided that information as well.
Yes. So we were made to understand that the landlord has amended agreements from each of the existing tenants acknowledging the drive-through, acknowledging the presence of the drive-through on this site.
And for the record, Mr. Rick Barfis is in attendance. He is the owner landlord of the site. Obviously, he's here now. Certainly, if the board feels it necessary for me to swear him in to confirm that information, because at the last hearing, there was a request to confirm that the tenants understood that this application was happening. And in fact, as you just heard, there are amended leases consenting to the incorporation of this drive-through and also to obtain through the landlord's assistance confirmation of the delivery schedule for those tenants, which you just heard. So certainly, he can testify if you would like me to swear him in to confirm that for the record, but obviously, he's here and heard that. So if you'd like me to do that, I can do that.
I have a question. When I read the transcript, it referenced WB67. I'm not really big on truck lingo. What actually, I know what a box truck is. Is that a tractor-trailer?
A WB67 is a tractor-trailer with a...
So it's a cab. Is it a 40-foot trailer?
That's a 53-foot. That's a 53-foot trailer.
53-foot.
Right, so that's the largest kind of, you see on the typical highways, the 53. And so that's the way this was modeled conservatively. There really won't be...
Another go around that bend and the other bend?
It gets around those bends. I mean, we modeled it to make sure. So in a computer model, it works, but we know empirically, I mean, that site has operated this way with a truck per week for the last however long the center's been involved, 30 years, no issues. And like I said, when you look at that corner in front, it's kind of like interesting that a truck does turn there, but they certainly do.
There's a question for you.
So what time of day do they pick up the garbage? Is it in the evening, or is it off-hours?
Garbage pickup, I don't know specifically. We didn't check on the times.
Of course, I don't see why the garbage truck can't travel the same way the other trucks do, back in and pick the thing up, dump it, and then go out the normal way. Why do they have to come in?
Yeah, so I would agree, and this is why we made a provision to allow them both ways, because some garbage companies load from the front, some load from the back. So if we have a garbage company, if we have a garbage company that's going to load from the front, they really need to come around the building that way.
It's off-hours, it's not a big deal.
No, and generally, I mean, I don't see garbage operations in commercial enterprises during business hours.
I'd have to think it would be early morning or something.
It's not good for business, generally.
Maybe the property owner can...
We also have Bobby Cole, who also testified for Panera at the last hearing.
Yeah, so, sir, you remain sworn in. You understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You just speak in, if you like.
So, yeah, our pickup there is early morning, 8:00 AM, 7:00 AM.
So you're actually in operation when the garbage is coming?
We are.
Don't you find that to be an issue?
No. At that time of the morning, it's...
I would think with what you want to do, that's an issue.
Have the garbage picked up before you open the door?
Yeah, I don't see it...
It's not so much as that. It's now they're coming through the front as opposed to going around the building, and, you know, that's a big thing. It's a big truck. And I'm assuming that these are, I don't know, four-foot by six-foot or about that size little dumpsters, and they're being picked up and dumped into the garbage truck. I mean, that's kind of scary if you're in operation and at that hour, that's one of your peak drive-through times. I think that that's like a, that's an issue.
Our peak drive-through is lunch, is really lunch and into the afternoon. We do do a volume for breakfast, but it's single car, one at a time. I mean, we have data that can show you that, but it's...
Well, you know, it's all good, because that's data that's not here. This is new. This is a different type of drive-through than the other facilities have. I'm not exactly comfortable with having garbage trucks coming right at the drive-through.
I don't know why garbage can't be picked up off-hours.
Right.
Why couldn't it be set up to come 2:00 in the morning or when you're closed?
Sure, we can arrange that.
I think that's something that you have, I think it's something you have to work out.
Yeah. I don't like the truck coming down.
Yeah, if that's an operational solution, we can make that happen. Our vendors do that.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have for direct. Happy to answer questions or talk about it as you see fit.
The emergency turnaround space that you have here?
Yes.
Is that delineated as no parking in some way?
Yes, it has white striping and hatching that marks it out. So when you come across it, it appears to look like a loading zone. I mean, if anything, it's not a parking space.
Should there be some signage there, maybe to make sure that people don't park there?
We certainly can. I mean, I think the likelihood of someone parking there is unusual, but there's no harm in putting a sign.
Strange things happen.
But a no-parking sign could easily be accommodated.
Okay. Does that work?
I know somebody has a fancy car and wants to be alone in a spot, so they can pull him there.
Right, exactly.
They certainly will get the message between the striping and the sign.
Any other questions from the board for this?
The front, sort of the, I guess it's the north part of that building. So let's see, take me through what this would, how the traffic pattern works again. For, you've got to get to the top there, cars here, just take me through.
Yeah, sure. For cars, not for trucks, you mean? Yep, okay. So we have a two-way aisle in front of the store, as we all know. When someone comes to the end of that two-way aisle heading north towards the end of the store, that's controlled by a stop sign, which is delineated by a stop bar and a stop sign. As from that vantage point...
Sorry, the stop bar is what?
The white paint on the paper. And then from that point, they can take a left turn to go into the parking areas. They could pull ahead to the park in front of them. Or they could take that right turn and enter into the drive-through queue of which they're... So they can, sorry, they can take a right entering into that drive-through queue. But from that stop bar location, like we established before, they can already see the back of the drive-through queue from that location and note the fact that if they decide they don't want to be in it for some reason, they still have that option to turn right. But let's assume that they've made that turn right. Now, as they turn right and they're heading along that eastern edge of the building, they see the white paint that's now marked on the ground with the X, and they're faced with the sign that says, "Do not block the box." So from that vantage point and location and the beginning of that striping, when this point is clear, they now make that left turn and get into the drive-through queue. Going the opposite way, people leaving the drive-through queue after you've picked up your food at this location, you have the stop bar on the ground and stop signs, which indicate, you know, they need to stop, look for oncoming traffic, in case there is somebody, in that rare case like we established that happens to be coming through, they have site distance to be able to see that. From that, then they manage their left turn and they exit, they manage their left turn and exit the site into the normal traffic pattern.
Any other questions? Do our professionals have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few, just to follow up on the testimony. So there's still no bypass lane. Any comment, I think you touched on this last hearing. If a vehicle is in this initial queue, I realize the stripe there, they don't want to wait for the four, five, or six cars ahead of them. What would they do to exit?
If they happen to get in here and they realize, "Oh, jeez, I really, I either don't want to be in the drive-through or it's taking too long." Yeah, that's one of the reasons this is striped, in addition to being able to accommodate those larger trucks and make sure they get out when they deliver, is the fact that this person can now exit the drive-through area. So do they realistically have enough room to turn around here without a K-turn? No. So they could exit, go down, turn around in a turnaround space and come out if they had to.
Kind of cumbersome now, because...
It is like we said before, slightly unusual for the drive-through layout because of the width we have here. We looked at options to be able to put in a drive-through, I'm sorry, a bypass into this, but geometrically, we need this width to allow those turns, and we need to get the trucks through.
And as practical matters from the test we have now and last year, you know, this site distance is clear all the way through to the end, so the decision about go or no go can be made at a leisure level.
But a lot of times, when you're sitting in the drive-through and you realize this line's not moving, and you're into a truck.
Sure.
It frequents the store a lot. During peak hours, it's busy.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's slow, so I can see the concern. So you're sitting there waiting, you know, five, you know, five days, 10 minutes, and really haven't moved, and you know, I'm not that way.
If, I mean, if an event that happened, I think it would be rare based on the way that they run their operation because of the dedicated kitchen. But understanding your point, I would just kind of hearken you back to really any kind of typical drive-through, call it a fast-food restaurant. The decision to enter a bypass or the queue into a drive-through is made at a certain point. But when you're in, once you're in that drive-through queue in any place, say, you know, typical McDonald's layout, or work, or even most banks, or anything, you're in it. And there isn't that opportunity where you're halfway through the drive-through queue and you can now just decide to bail. That's kind of the way most typical retail, commercial drive-throughs work and have to work. The decision points in advance, we don't have the option here of being able to go onto the neighbor's property for that decision point to happen here, as you would maybe in a broader site where the bypass happens around in most, in many cases. Ours made decision points here, but like I said previously, we've built in a couple fail safes. If in case those decision points fail, the site's still able to operate and is safe.
I have two more follow-up. So the garbage truck, we said, is likely a front-loading garbage truck.
It could be, and that's why we...
And that's popular style.
It is, and that's why we made the kind of provision there that allows it.
In operation, we will recondition that.
Of timing, for sure.
My question is, if the garbage still gets picked up during operational time, 8:00 or so, he would then have to back out past that drive-through lane to get back out or do some kind of K-turn type thing for a large truck, and it's kind of a tight area.
He doesn't need to do that turn, and so I probably should have illustrated that.
My point is, I think currently, he probably does that.
Right.
But it's a very low-intents use of that side parking. I don't think that's peak parking area, so it's a little bit different.
It, it is, and, uh, but that's one of the reasons we put this turnaround space here. So that, that turnaround space is oversized. The, the garbage truck can also use that to do his turnaround. And, and just like you said, that, that's what happens today. Only now, if he does that K-turn, he's backing over parking spaces. Used or not, it's still parking spaces. Now, we've given him space to turn and, and not be in the way of, of anything.
That's why if it's done earlier in the morning, there is no issue of vehicles or pedestrians being present.
It's, it's, the earlier, he could do it, it's better.
And the other question was back to the Hobby Lobby truck, that large truck that comes through there and that one, like I said last night. I, I was there at the site at five o'clock on the weeknight and when it was coming through. Um, I didn't see the exhibit prior to tonight. That trailing edge, the, uh, of the, of the rear wheel, um, no conflict with, with clipping that, uh, bullnose curb of the last car coming around there, it clears that?
It does, and, I mean, we'll, we'll show it to you. And we, we can send you the model too, so you can kind of double-check. But it clears, I, I, it is close, and, but, you know, once again, they, they fit through there today. We're providing in that room. Worst case, if, if you, you take a look at it and you're like, that's too close, uh, we, we can clip the bullnose curb there and stripe that piece too. It works. Sir, do you have a question?
Yeah, the, um, the drive-out between the cars, is it the same distance as what exists now? I mean, it's typical, is it twenty-four?
It's twenty-six now.
Twenty-six.
Because it's, it's the slight angle, so it's twenty-six.
Twenty-four is required, right?
Twenty-four is required.
Right, so any person that wants to come out has enough room to do the K-turn if necessary.
Yeah, this, yeah, this is, this is the standard aisle as it exists throughout this sort of, and most, most retail aisles, twenty-four.
Any other questions? Yes, Bob?
Yeah, um, I see that you, um, saw that we located a door, uh, that, so that is a, uh, door that our customers can access.
That is, that is true, and that, you're right. And, um, if, if previously, this location we're employing right here on the north side of the building, next to the display building addition, we showed this grass area, but the architect had shown a door, uh, that enters out, outside of the building. So we, we agreed to in the last hearing that this piece needed to be cibed. Uh, because that is, uh, and that the doors exist today. If you've ever been to the site, there is a side door for patrons. Okay, you built them into the store now, that, that door won't move. And we needed to provide people when they come out, access to be able to get out, uh, to put the parking there.
Okay, uh, next question, please. The landscaping has proposed, um, going beyond the, uh, stop sign, people are, people are answering the drive-out.
Mm-hmm.
I think that all road planning, so that, um, we, you know, cycle system, uh, drive-throughs, you know, uh-
Yeah, yeah, that's, those, those are mostly ground cover plants, so we, we anticipate those being at the, uh, twelve to eighteen inch range. There are some low, low-grown shrubs behind them to add a little more mass and separation between the sidewalk and the pavement. Uh, but those, those will be, those will be trimmed to twenty-four. But those are out, those are the closest to the building. They're outside, really, the sight distance type, uh, access, uh, sight, sight use that we talked about for the cars. So, yes.
So I had a question from the last, um, session about the, the, uh, parking floor handicap. Did you get that all figured out?
They, they addressed that, yeah, there's, there's a-
I saw it in here, but I wanted to make sure that that's, that's the question. Yeah, that was my question.
I have an operational question. I kind of touched on it earlier. If, and I don't know if this is for the gentleman in back who, uh, is the area manager. Um, if there's a problem with an order, which it happens, and there's somebody stuck at the pickup window and the queue starts picking up, what is the, the solution for that?
So the, the solution would be to pull into any parking space and we would run the food out. And we would convey that at the, at the window. Called pull ahead, we pull, we would pull the car ahead.
So they would be instructed to continuously drive through, get in the parking space.
So there's a formal process for that when, when the order has a problem?
I think, yep, and I, and I can just tell you from, I've been with Panera for twelve years, several drive-throughs in my life. I could count on my hands the number of times that's occurred.
Any, any other questions right now? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Okay.
We have no more witnesses.
So the parking has been addressed as far as the handicap goes?
Yes.
Um, the delivery times have been addressed. Those are between nine and twelve o'clock, is that what, is that what I heard? Eight, twelve for, um, Hobby Lobby and whatever the zero place is?
Uh, five below.
Five below, okay, sorry. Um, all right, so that's not proposing any, any issue. The garbage trucks, you're gonna work that out?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions? Mark, you have a question?
We, can I?
Please.
Yeah, I think, to ans, yeah, I mean, to answer that, and of course, we can reopen and, and have them answer some more. But at, at the last hearing, um, the, the issue that's kind of counterintuitive is that, uh, the incorporation of the drive-through actually reduces the demand for parking spaces. Because what happens is, in the current condition, if I, if all of us wanted to go to Panera to take out, um, and we didn't want to stay and eat there, each of us would have to find a parking space, go in, get the order. Like, even if we were picking it up and called ahead. Whereas now, those, uh, orders are being handled by the drive-through. And so now, all of us are not competing for those parking spaces. And in fact, as we said at the last hearing, they see regularly with the incorporation of the drive-through that the sales on the interior, which is where people would be parking, are reduced, I think, to about twenty percent. Twen, so the sales go down inside about twenty percent. Now, of course, as the chairman mentioned in the other application, everybody's in business to make money. Those sales are recaptured through the drive-through, but the demand is actually lessened for the parking spaces. And, you know, Panera does this, they don't want to create a problem issue. Uh, they're doing this, they've, they've modeled it, they've done it, and their, their service times, and, and again, we had our traffic engineer do an exhaustive study. So it, it does all work, uh, when you look at the parking spaces and how operationally it works. So, I, and, you know, respectfully, we understand, you know, sometimes it takes a little to understand it, but certainly, and Bobby, you can mention-
I've been in this park a lot, an awful lot.
Yeah.
And I know what it's like when it's not busy, and I know what it's like when it is busy. Now, when it is busy, it's a zip. And to me, I think this is creating, especially down in town, this is more, creating more of an issue. Because I look at this as, this is an enhancement for the store. An enhancement maybe for people that, hey, I can go through the drive-through. How it's actually gonna possibly increase business, not necessarily deeply, for the dramatic impact on the inside systems. And to me, I think it's gonna do, it's gonna benefit more.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's-
Yeah, so we, we took a, see, um, a somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent reduction of foot traffic inside. Um, that allows our customer to come through the drive-through for ease-of-use purposes. Uh, we also have rapid pickup where you can come in, you can order online and pick up ten minutes in advance. Folks also pick that up through the drive-through as well. So it, it lessens the burden on the inside foot traffic, which is what we need to do at the bakery-cafe for ease-of-use for our customers. One other question you had was around speed and of service. Being that this is completely a, a, a separate line functioning just for the drive-through, it, it's, we won't be building off the main line. So speed of service in a drive-through is three and a half minutes to five at peak, so. Any other questions?
You okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna ask for, uh, an approval for the application subject to the garbage being reworked. A sign in that corner where it's striped. Um, do you want to see the model for the, the, the tractor-trailer before?
I'd like to see that exhibit, uh, submit it, uh, just to, to verify that the curbs work and everything works.
We, we're concerned.
All right, so otherwise, the alternative is to stripe it?
Right, what the testimony was that the, the concern is this area here-
Is being, it's too tight for the truck to maneuver?
Although the, the model does show it as being compliant, and he can look at it and see it. If, if, other ones pushing wanted to, we wanted to cut this end off and that part would be striped rather than this one.
Yeah, I would like to see, and I could-
Cut one car out of it and leave the-
Is it, if, if it doesn't work the way they're proposing, are, are we all right with it being striped?
Yeah, I mean, I, I suspect that it's gonna work fine. I mean, they, they ran it to standard model, it's an ASH O model, I'm sure it's fine, I just would like to submit it.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, what else are we missing?
I think that's it.
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, open it to the public. Oh, oh, I, I'm sorry. Uh, I thought that I asked, uh, if there's anyone from the public would like to be heard, please come forward.
Okay, I think we're, uh, done with that. So with the stipulations that were just stated, I'd like to ask for an approval for the application, twenty-eighteen dash twelve, Panera Bread LLC, two ninety-five Route twenty-two East, Block four thousand one, Lot three. That's a preliminary and final site plan, use variance with a bulk variances, added drive-through. Is there a motion to approve the application?
I'll move to approve it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
May we have a roll call?
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Monaco?
Yes.
Mr. Hoxsey?
Yes.
Mr. Schnur? Mr. Cunningham? And Chairman Fonseca?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. I'd like for, to ask for a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
They came back and drew some of the things I don't know.
I've read it, so, yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, they went down, they went down, they went down.
I just couldn't think about the garbage at the time, the timing, but I knew it was, once he said they're coming in-
When they, when they brought it up, that's when I jotted it down.